Richard, you getting a call or is that made it's time to start the meeting? Which one is?
Call. I'm trying to shut it off.
Well, it's a good reason. Is any of the, we'll call this meeting to order. And as is our custom, we'll begin with a moment of reflection and then an invocation. I just wanted to, to comment this evening. If you're familiar with this board, you know that we all share a high regard for scouting. We encourage troops and scouts to participate in our meetings and we take every opportunity to recognize their accomplishments. Commissioner Aikmas is an Eagle Scout. Commissioner Rushing's son Reagan is an Eagle Scout. I'm a Life Scout, a former scout master, and have three sons who all attained the rank of Eagle. A big part of scouting involves their service organization known as the Order of the Arrow. One of my treasured memories is that of receiving my Brotherhood sash along with my three sons in an OA ceremony at Camp Bob Harden in Saluda. Now each scout, when inducted or tapped into the Order of the Arrow, is required to take an oath known as the obligation, and it goes like this. "I do hereby promise on my honor as a scout that I will always and faithfully observe and preserve the traditions of the Order of the Arrow, that of brotherhood, cheerfulness, and service. I will always regard the ties of brotherhood as lasting and will seek to preserve a cheerful spirit even in the midst of irksome tasks and weighty responsibilities, and will endeavor so far as in my power lies to be unselfish in service and devotion to the welfare of others." 2020 has certainly been a year of challenges with its sheer irksome task and weighty responsibilities that we all have suffered with. The Apostle Paul takes a different approach in his response to our sufferings and tells us to rejoice in them. For as he says, "Suffering produces perseverance, and perseverance character, and character hope, and hope does not disappoint us." Bow with me if you choose. Almighty God, as we come together this evening to address the issues facing our county, we ask your presence among us. Equip each of us with a cheerful spirit and an unselfish devotion to all that we serve. Lord, we feel the tremendous weight of many of the issues facing us, the threat of COVID-19, social strife, the uncertainty of a looming election, and the impacts of it all to our economy and the general welfare. Father, give us the strength to persevere and the hope that together we will emerge a stronger and more united and a more peaceful republic. We pray, oh God, for those who suffer the emotional and physical pain resulting from the pandemic's impact, loneliness, depression, abuse, addiction, and economic stress. Lord, give confidence and strength to those caregivers and frontline workers who assist in helping others cope. We pray especially for our law enforcement, fire, and EMS as they serve to keep us safe. Watch over our military who are serving at home and abroad. Father, we pray for all those who as leaders serve as we draw near to the end of another election. Grant both incumbents and challengers wisdom and humility. Finally, oh God, we recognize you as the great physician, and pray for President Trump, Senator Tillis, asking for healing for them and all those afflicted by this disease. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of public hearings this evening, and I'll read some instructions for those. We have four public hearings on tonight's agenda, two are for proposed economic development incentive grants, and two are rezoning requests. The following rules and procedure will apply to each of those public hearings. Each individual who is registered to speak will have three minutes, provided that this limitation shall not apply to staff or staff representatives, nor shall it apply to applicants for rezoning permits. The applicant for a rezoning permit pursuant to the Unified Development Ordinance shall speak first following comments by staff, and the applicant will not be limited to three minutes. Rather, the applicant will be given a reasonable length of time not to exceed 15 minutes to explain the application while keeping comments succinct and directly relevant to the application. The chair may determine when an applicant has exceeded a reasonable time for presentation of the application. There is a timer to the right of the microphone that will count down after you state your name and where you reside. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow and you will hear a beep. At the end of your time, the light will turn red and the timer will beep again. At that time, please wrap up your comments quickly to allow time for the next speaker. Our first public hearing is Project Town Center to consider an economic development incentive grant, and we have Chris Platte with us.
Chairman Simpson, Commissioners Manager Watson, it's my pleasure to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive grant request by the developers of Town Center Project, of the Town Center Project and Indian Trail. The Town Center Project is a transformational project that should be a catalyst in the development of the main street area of downtown Indian Trail. This is a three-part mixed-use development that could be a catalyst project for that downtown area. The total scope of the project incorporates residential apartments, single-family town homes, and the retail commercial office space area. That is the area that we're talking about tonight and what we are trying to apply an incentive towards. To create this project in its entirety, specifically the retail and commercial node, the developer needs to improve the site, including roadways, water infrastructure, and other site work. Large-scale retail commercial developments in downtown areas require a lot more work than in other areas, and this work typically will benefit other areas than just the footprint of that site. And therefore, because of what they're doing in such an area, it is transformational. So for example, the waterline improvements will ensure that the proper water pressure and capacity for the project, to serve the project, is there, but it also provides the much-needed adequate water-for-fire protection that is not currently available to the residents in the larger area. Also, once the site enhancements are complete, it will enable additional commercial and retail development to occur in the area, therefore hopefully satisfying the vision of the town for a community epicenter there. So Union County, again, just to remind, is only incentivizing the retail and commercial portion of this project, and this is the first time that a municipality and the county has jointly participated in this project. Indian Trail, at their last council meeting, approved an incentive grant for half a million dollars toward this project as the partner with us and the developer. The project details are that it will be 160,000 square feet of retail and commercial space with a value of $30 million in the brick and mortar. Looking at further down the line as they outfit those spaces, we could see an additional $15 million in development on that site. The jobs projected, based on the footprint, is about 175 jobs for the project. So we're looking at an incentive grant of half a million dollars distributed over four monthly installments for this project. The grant period in which we would recoup back property taxes to us to cover the grant would be a, over a five-year period, and in that five-year period, we should generate an additional $877,080 for the grant. There is a clawback, being that this is a unique grant and the money is going upfront. We're putting in some protections there for the tax dollars that are being granted to the project, and so there's a minimum of $20 million that has to be invested by the developer, and then there's a clawback provision there. If they fail to meet that minimum investment, the clawback is triggered and they must repay the full grant amount of half a million dollars. Looking at the cost-benefit for this project, for every dollar invested by the community, the first five years, that grant period, we would get $4.24 back, so four, $4.24 to one for the grant period of the project, and over the life of the project, it's a 6.44 to one return. So we would like to present, this, again, opportunity was presented to Indian Trail, and then that was passed unanimously by their group. So the Economic Development Board of Advisors and Staff recommend the award of the performance-based incentive grant to Town Center LLC in an amount of half a million dollars in order to secure this $30 million retail commercial development in Indian Trail. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Marcus Arroyo with the development company, and he's available to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. On behalf of Indian Trail Town Center, just want to tell all of you thank you for taking the time to sit down with us over the last couple of years working on this, as well as like acknowledge county manager and staff along. This was not an easy process, working through all the years, basically, on this, but this experience and, and working together really is to improve all of Union County and to come up with certain products and procedures, basically, to be able to help facilitate certain projects to this bank student of this size. We are excited about this project. It's been a long road, basically, to get to there. We have a good amount of activity already happening. We already have our multifamily component in process. We have a national compliance, basically, that's going to add to the single-family portion, and that'll give us a nice little background to help Indian Trail be able to lure in and recruit national players to the downtown Indian Trail area, which will be a big compliment to the county as well. So, that being said, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but in that, really want to thank you guys for sitting down with us over the last couple of years of work on this.
Questions? Thank you. This time I'll open the public hearing. We have no one signed to speak, so I will close the public hearing. Our next, next item is Hamilton Drywall Products, I believe.
Good evening, Chairman Simpson, Commissioners Manager Watson. My name is Evan Mazingo. I'm the new projects manager for Monroe Union County Economic Development, and it is my pleasure to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive grant request by Hamilton Drywall, otherwise referred to as Project Eastback. Just some background, Hamilton Drywall is a family-owned business headquartered in Orange, California, where they are known as Westpac. They have locations in Washington State and another community here in North Carolina. They produce drywall joint compound finishes for the construction industry. Hamilton began discussions with us a couple of months ago to move one of their locations to Monroe or a site in South Carolina. They have identified the Monroe Metals facility on Stitt Street as a potential location, specifically the 98,000-square-foot building in the rear of the property. It's the big blue building, if you've been by there recently. They will plan to, the plan for the building is to include major renovations and upfits as well as new equipment to be brought to the facility. Hamilton has also requested incentive money from the state in the form of the 1NC and the building reuse grant that they will use to renovate that building. The company is considering a $5 million investment. If Union County is the selected location, the building would be renovated and the equipment would be installed and operational by mid-2021, as well as the hiring of approximately 34 people. The company has indicated that incentives are a very important factor for the project, and this project is in competition with another location in South Carolina. Therefore, tonight, we are requesting your consideration of a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $115,000 to be paid over five years, beginning in fiscal year 2022, based upon the Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year on the company's anticipated investment of $5 million. Based on this investment and holding all factors constant, including depreciation, the company would pay estimated ad valorem taxes on the new taxable investment of $182,725 over the five-year grant period. Actual tax revenue to Union County will be based on the current tax rate applied to the assessed value of the investment each year after depreciation. We presented this project to the Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors at their regular meeting on September 8th, where they unanimously supported for us to bring this project tonight to you for your consideration. Just doing some quick math on the, on the project, the project has a cost-benefit analysis of 1.7 to 1 over the five-year grant period and 2.4 to 1 over the entire life of the project. We will also be presenting this opportunity to the Monroe City Council tomorrow at their regular meeting, where we will request a similar economic development incentive grant. Therefore, Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors and Staff recommend the award of this Step Two Performance-Based Incentive Grant to Hamilton Drywall in an amount not to exceed $115,000 in order to help secure this $5 million investment. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Mark Hamilton, president of Hamilton Drywall, who's available tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Evan. Good morning, good afternoon, I'm sorry. In addition to that, I guess I can only add that we are looking for a satellite plant in the Monroe area to manufacture drywall finishing products and also metal corner bead. If there's any question you guys have for me, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
This time I will open the public hearing. On Hamilton Drywall, we have no one signed up to speak, so I will close the public hearing. Next is Public Hearing CZ 2018-007, Beulah Church Road Commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is 2018-007, Beulah Church Road Commercial. It is a request to rezone a piece of property in Union County from R40 to B2 conditional. That's a community business district. An applicant makes that request in order to develop around a 30,000-square-foot office and retail small shopping center at the corner of Waxaw Indian Trail Road and Beulah Church Road. As you can see on your screens, this is the conceptual plan that's been presented by the applicant. As you can see, there's a few buildings, parking in the rear, have two access points, one on the south end of Waxaw Indian Trail Road, and then another one on the western end of Beulah Church Road. They are both right-in, right-out, and they both have about 100 feet of storage. The applicant provided several conditions related, in addition to that conceptual plan, that basically limited their uses. So you can see those uses listed. They said that governmental services, library and cultural exhibits, postal service, animal services, daycare centers, eating establishments, financial services, offices, retail sales, and medical offices were allowed uses, and those would be the only allowed uses on the, on the site. They would have design guidelines, and that they would control stormwater runoff. These are just some pictures of the property and some of the adjacent properties. Top left is looking across Beulah Church Road. That's the site that was rezoned probably about a year, maybe a year and a half ago for the age-restricted senior living facility, so that's what that site would be in the future. The top right is again looking from the property to the church. That's at the other corner of Waxaw Indian Trail and Beulah. Again, bottom left is the property looking onto the final corner of that intersection, and that's a vacant site right now. And the last picture is looking into the site, so that is the site that is subject of the rezoning. This request is near two municipalities in Union County. You can see to the south and sort of to the east, you've got Wesley Chapel that's in close proximity, actually adjacent to it at one point, and then to the north and to the west, you have the town of Weddington. The property is currently undeveloped. The property to the north does show undeveloped, however, again, the corner is where the senior living facility rezoning approval was, was given a couple of years ago, and then the rest of that site is currently under development as a single-family neighborhood. There's also a single-family neighborhood that's under development behind the property, so kind of where I'm hovering my mouse now, there's a single-family neighborhood under development there. No major environmental features on this subject property, it's kind of high ground. Across the street, in the Twin Lakes neighborhood, there is a stream and some floodplains, but on this specific property, it is kind of high ground, no major streams or environmental features to speak of. Most of the properties in the area are served by Union County Water and Sewer, but it is, it is kind of a mixed bag in the area. There are some that are well-inseptic. Water is available to the site along Beulah Church Road, and sewer is available via a short extension that will connect to the subdivision that's under development to the west right there. And all improvements of those utilities will be at the developer's expense. The zoning in the area is mostly R40. You do have a R4 conditional district across the street, that is the senior living facility, and there is a, a commercial district just to the north of that along Waxaw Indian Trail Road, a gas station, I believe the name of it is Nina's Market. Everything else in the area is R40, has mostly low-density to medium-density subdivisions. Again, the project is bounded by Waxaw Indian Trail Road and Beulah Church Road. Waxaw Indian Trail is designated as a major thoroughfare. It is shown in the CTP as a four-lane with curb and gutter. There is absolutely no timeframe on when that's going to happen. It's not even a funded project at this point, so, so I have, I have no date available for when that may happen. Beulah Church Road is shown as, it's a two-lane road right now, but in the future, it will get a wider shoulder. You can see some traffic counts just in the area, around 10,000 vehicle trips a day along Waxaw Indian Trail Road, and then you also have going north along Waxaw Indian Trail around 4,800. Land use plan, this area is designated as a neighborhood center, so some commercial development should be anticipated. And then the planning board voted three to two to recommend approval. They did offer in their approval some conditions that they suggested. They did not want a drive-through facility, such as a, a drive-through with a bank or a restaurant, and, and those would not be allowed under their current zoning anyway, so that's, they just wanted that as an additional protection. They did not want any exterior exercise facilities. The main point of contention there was they didn't want something like a CrossFit, which can't exclude a specific business like that, but where you roll up the doors and have a lot of music and loud noise. So they want an indoor, if there was an exercise facility, for it to be indoors and for the noise to be controlled. They suggested hours of operation between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Site lighting restricted to zero-foot candles at the property line, that basically means that that requires a light study. It shows that you don't have any light spillover onto adjacent properties, and then limiting the uplight rating to zero for the backlight and uplight glare. Basically, what that means is you have a full cutoff fixture. Basically, there's no light that shines behind the fixture. It basically shines straight down out into the parking lot. It doesn't go above the vertical plane of the fixture itself, and that the glare is reduced. And they also suggested installing an eight-foot berm and a five-foot wall along any property line that abuts residentially zoned property. I know the applicant is here, I'm sure they're going to want to make a presentation, but before they do, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have of me.
Mr. Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See, we have a note from Village of Wesley Chapel, and it says something about a convenience store, and I saw nothing about a convenience store in your presentation.
Yes, sir. Back up to the site plan. One of the original site plans for this that was part of their application package did have a gas station component to it. That was removed by the applicant based on some comments, I believe, they got at the, at the community meeting. So, so they removed that request, so if, if any future gas station were to ever want to go there, they would have to come back, or if this request was approved, they would have to come back to, again, request that to be rezoned again to include a gas station.
Because that would not be allowed.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Mark Keim. I am a landscape architect for Land Design in Charlotte. I am the site designer for the project, and I'm speaking here on behalf of Beulah Church Road Developers LLC. As Lee alluded to, we are requesting to rezone the property from R40 to B2 CZ, and it's a 3.25-acre site, and that includes right-of-way dedication for future widening for Waxaw Indian Trail Road as well as Beulah Church Road. As Lee alluded to, the site is located just due south of the future Twin Lakes Independence Senior Living Facility. This depicts the single-family subdivision that is currently under construction, Twin Lakes, and then the Castellino subdivision due west of the site. This is a rendered version of the site plan where you're proposing, proposing upwards of 15,300 square feet of retail as well as 15,300 square feet of office. These buildings are generally depicted. As far as their location, they would be pressed up against the road frontage with parking tucked behind. The buildings could be combined or reconfigured, but this would be the general alignment as far as the presentation from the exterior right of way. As Lee noted, we have two points of access. These points have been located as far away from the splitter islands for the roundabout as possible. These would be right-in, right-out access points. We're also going to have a 25-foot rear setback that we will provide, an eight-foot berm with the five-foot screen fence along that, both sides for where we bought the residential property, with the potential for outdoor plaza and other connections to perimeter sidewalks in the area. We had Kimley Horn take a look at traffic impacts for this development, and they concluded that a 100-foot right-turn lane for both access points, which should be provided on Beulah Church Road as well as Waxaw Indian Trail Road. And then this is just some general imagery of other small retail in the area, which is consistent with the type of look that we're trying to propose in this area. I'm not going to go through the potential list of uses that Lee alluded to, but at this time, we don't have any tenants lined up, but this depicts the general character of what we're proposing. Following the planning board meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the lighting. We went ahead and did a preliminary lighting layout with a full cutoff fixture to demonstrate we would have along the backside here, where we bought the Castellino subdivision, there would be no light spillover onto those properties. And another point that came up during that meeting was the, the view and restricting pedestrian access from this facility and walking into the subdivision. So we want to cut a section to, to show what the separation of space was between the existing home sites and this proposed commercial site. So from the existing home here, we've got about just under 400 feet to the edge of the proposed building, about 280 feet to the edge of the parking lot. As noted, we'd have the eight-foot berm with the five-foot screen fence, which would prevent any kind of pedestrian access, and then there would be layers of planting, the sand filter BMP that would service the site. Based on the drainage area of the site, we don't expect that it could support a wet pond. It's only about three acres of drainage. So based off of, you know, the future buildout of these two corridors, we feel this is an ideal location for a small neighborhood commercial center. We don't envision that this would be redeveloped as residential, especially with the improvements of the roundabout. It just doesn't seem like it would lend itself to a residential use, so that's why we're coming forward with the request tonight. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dean Harrell, who's the applicant here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Dean Harrell, and I'm the applicant for the Beulah Church Road commercial. We've held this property on and off for approximately the last 20 years, and it was part of a subdivision that we did toward the west that was incorporated in the makes and bounds of this property. So this is the parcel we have left over on the corner. It is becoming a high-traffic area. I guess, planning board member put it the best, is if it's not this, then what could it be? It's, you know, really not conducive to residential on the corner there. We originally came in with the community meeting proposing a convenience store, gas, eight-pump gas station situation. We listened to the public input. We absolutely have taken that out and restricted those uses as to there will be no service station, gas station, convenience store-type situation. We've also offered to deed restrict it to that because there was some concern that it could come back. We're willing to make that deed restriction as part of the conditional use, just so the folks have a comfort level that there will be no gas station there. Most likely, with what's going on with the retirement portion of it across the street and from the folks that has have contacted me, it's most likely going to be a mixture of medical because of the continuous of the retirement section, and we have had some interest with the animal hospital. But again, that short list of uses is what we propose and nothing outside of that. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Dean, with the animal facility, would you be willing to restrict it to indoor activity only?
Yes, that's correct. This would not have an outdoor kennel attached to it whatsoever. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing, and our first speaker is Mike Como.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, excuse me, commissioners. My name is Mike Como. I'm at 1104 Hybrook Drive, Waxaw, North Carolina. I'm also a chairman, a committee member for the Wesley Chapel Town Council. As Stoney Rushing already alluded to, there's been a lot of concern about this from the residents of Wesley Chapel. Wesley Chapel, at the request of the residents, sent a resolution to each one of you. I hope you've got an updated copy of that. It was asked at our last town council meeting that we send you the resolution a second time. I think the first time it was when this originally came up, and then we wanted to make sure it was fresh in your mind, so we sent it out again in the last week or so. But the residents in this area have all spoken about this. They'd really like to see this deed restricted so that it wouldn't be a gas station. I'm glad that the applicant has made those restrictions. I would hope you would tag that on to whatever decision you make here tonight, that it is deed restricted. Thank you.
David Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, staff. My name is David Williams. I reside at 1014 Exodus Court in Indian Trail. I come before you this evening to speak against this development. I'll keep it brief. My main objection really to it is that the conceptual plan is pretty thin indeed on details. And the reason I say that is if you look at page four of the plan, it says, "Any configurations, placements, number, and sizes of the buildings and the treatment of the open space areas may be modified." So, you know, I understand that the applicant has made changes to the map based on public input. However, what's been submitted by the applicant is pretty loosey-goosey to my mind and thin on details, and I think it sets quite a dangerous precedent to conditionally rezone based on applications that are that thin on detail. So, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Espinosa. I live in 4816 Waxaw Indian Trail Road, Matthews, North Carolina. In 2010, my husband had a dream to acquire an eyesore property that is located on 4824 Waxaw Indian Trail to build a beautiful building there. And the first individual who tried to stop his dream to come true was Harold Dean, a developer. And at that time, we used to be thinking Tessa Community, which was one of his development. In 2018, Dean Harrell and the Kohuna Realty developed a community called Castellino, and I left the corner empty, the corner that he's trying to build now, to make a deal eventually with either QuickTrip or 7-Eleven. Both businesses need a V2 Sony, which is he's trying to acquire at this time. So Dean Harrell is trying to betray the people from whom he already profited from, which is the casino community, and put a commercial Sony in their backyard. And as far as I know, a deed restriction are not enforceable by Union County. Thank you.
How are you, member of the board? I'm Francisco Espinosa. I live at 4816 Waxaw Indian Trail Road. I'm the owner of Nina's Market. Probably you know, for the last 2,000 years, people have been betraying other people for pleasure or for money. You probably remember a man called Jesus, who was betrayed by Judah for thirty silver coins. My mother Nina said to me one day, "Help others. Don't hurt them. Do not betray them. Just help them. And one day, others will help you if you need it." You know, she was right. She passed away in 1992. So I will tell you a story. In 1975, my mother was married to my father, and another married woman got close to our family. This woman betrayed my mother. She took my father from my mother, and in the process, she broke her heart. This woman gave birth soon with my father, and forty years has passed. In 2015, this boy fell in love, and his love betrayed him and broke his heart. He could not support the pain himself, so he killed himself. You know, if this woman had not betrayed my mother in the first place, this story would be different. Today, Dean Harrell needs your help to betray everyone who opposed, to betray the neighbors who already profited from, and for that, need you both. So if you help him as a developer, you might condemn him as a father. This is a true story. Thank you.
Jennifer Lowry.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lowry. I live at 313 Holly Hawk Drive in the Castellino neighborhood, which is right behind the proposed rezoning. I am against the rezoning. There are a lot of variables. It's right in our backyard. When the neighbors of Castellino purchased houses there, we were not aware. We were told that this section of land was residential, and even when we asked what might go there, we were told that they thought that the owner may build a couple of houses. I did not know at that time that this, all the land, including Castellino, I guess, was originally owned by Mr. Harrell, but then he kept that portion of the corner as opposed to leaving it all as the neighborhood. But we, I mean, I do appreciate everything that he's done. Like, we definitely don't want a gas station, and so I hope that that is enforceable because we do not want that in our backyard for sure. But there's just so many variables about what could go there, and I'm concerned, even if Mr. Harrell builds beautiful buildings, if he sells those, what's going to happen in five or 10 years if the owner doesn't keep those up? So I'm very concerned about what's going to happen to our land value, and, you know, we've lived in the Weddington area for 20 years and used to live in Weddington. I did not realize that this wasn't the city limits, I don't think, when we moved. But anyway, I'm just worried about, like, how it's going to affect our resale value when, if we do go to sell one day. And I really just didn't want retail in my backyard. If I did, I'd move to Waverly or move somewhere else if that was my thing. And we have families that live in this neighborhood. We all have kids who are riding their bikes and playing. I'm worried about people turning around because of the right turns. If they miss their turn or whatever, they may use our neighborhood, which could affect the safety of our families as well as our roads, and then who's going to pay to have the roads fixed if, you know, there's a lot of wear and tear? So those are some of my concerns. I appreciate the ones that he's already addressed. We do want it to be safe. I don't really want retail in my backyard, but if it's, if it has to be there, then we do hope that the berms are put into place, the low lighting, and all of those things to protect us as much as possible. Thank you.
It's our last speaker. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Takes us to item six, CZ 2020 002 Courtyards at Howie Farms.
This is CZ 2020 002 Howie Farms, and this is a request to rezone a piece of property in Union County from R-40 to R-4 conditional. The applicant requests this in order to develop an 89-unit, age-restricted, single-family neighborhood. As you can see, it is located off of Billy Howie Road, has one point of access on the Billy Howie, and it is about 1.9, almost two units per acre in terms of density. These were just some elevations that were provided by the applicant, showing what the houses would potentially look like. General area, this is standing, top-left picture is looking at the site from across the street, so that is the site that is proposed to be rezoned. This is looking down Billy Howie, I guess headed south. Picture on the bottom-left is looking on Billy Howie headed north toward Wesley Chapel Volunteer Fire Department. And then the bottom picture on the right is looking into the Wesley Oaks neighborhood across the street. That's the neighborhood that this would line up with. Again, as far as municipalities, this is almost completely surrounded by Wesley Chapel. There is a little bit of Union County unincorporated across the street, but on the Billy Howie side of the road that the property, the subject property's on, it's completely surrounded. Again, it's undeveloped. Most of the properties to the south of that are also undeveloped. We do have a good amount of development to the north. We have several subdivisions, and if we were to go off of the map a little bit to the north, that's the Target Shopping Center. So this Wesley Oaks neighborhood feeds directly into the Target Shopping Center, right at the corner of 84 and Waxaw Indian Trail Road. There is a stream that goes through the property, and the developer is proposing to pipe that stream to get the road over the stream, but that's the only other, that's the only major environmental feature on the property. Most of the properties are served by Union County Water and Sewer. Water is available in place along Billy Howie Road, and sewer is available via a short extension that will connect to a manhole that's in the road in the Wesley Oaks neighborhood. So they will go into the road to connect to that. And again, all those improvements will be at the developer's expense. The vast majority of the zoning in the area is R-40. You do have some R-20 sprinkled in, in some various areas, and there is some light industrial or heavy industrial as well. As far as schools go, since this is a residential rezoning, we'd like to give you the school information. Wesley Chapel Elementary is currently rated at 103% of capacity. Weddington Middle is 104% of capacity, and Weddington High School is at 91% of capacity. Again, this is on Billy Howie Road. Future CTP shows that as a two-lane, to remain a two-lane road, but with a paved shoulder. Waxaw Indian Trail Road, again, four-lane with curb and gutter, but no timeframe on that, is not a funded project, so we don't know when that will happen. There is a funded roundabout project at Waxaw Indian Trail and Newtown Road. However, we don't have a timeframe for that project either, being with DOT's current situation. Land use plan calls for this area to be single-family residential. There is a large community center just to the north. The way the plan is written, person should expect some higher density, but not a whole lot because it is single-family residential. Planning board voted four to two to recommend denial of the request. The concerns were traffic, density, and that it was out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. I do want to note that the project has been reduced in scope since the planning board meeting. I believe you'll note in your application packet that this, the current request is around, I believe it was 89 units that's in your packets. I think the one that the planning board saw was around 115. It was around two and a half units per acre when it went to the planning board. The developers gone back, and they have reduced that amount of density. So I just wanted you to know that. So when the planning board's recommendation was based on a slightly different plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have of me. I know the applicant is here. I believe they do have a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rush.
How much was the, how much was it reduced by?
I believe that the request that went to the planning board was 115 units, and I believe now we're at 89. So it was, it was reduced a good bit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. The school targets that you were talking about, has that been communicated with our school board? Because historically, on over levels of schools, they anticipate the children will go somewhere else.
Right. The response, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, we did communicate with the school facilities planning staff, and they indicated that that would, that these were the schools that would feed, that this subdivision would feed into. They did not indicate that those would go to a different school.
Thank you, Lee.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Mike Davis. I am the Director of Land Development for EPCON Communities. We are excited to be in front of you this evening. Let me get this to, trying to remember how this, where's the full screen on this one? Apologize to the view. Ah, there we go. Apologize for the delay. So as I was saying, Director of Land Development for EPCON Communities, our corporate office is 11,020 David Taylor Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. Who is EPCON Communities? Why are we different? This is important. We are privately-held home-building company. We are not a big-box builder. We have been We have been building quality homes for the fifty-five plus market for over thirty-three year, thirty-four years. This is all we do. We do senior housing. We offer design options to age and place for buyers, which is very unique. Wider doors, hallways, large garage, and zero step entries to home and showers. Our community are age restricted, not age targeted. And I'll get into the difference in the next slide. We've been actively building in the, uh, Charlotte metro area for, since two thousand thirteen. Our communities are smaller than the typical large scale age targeted communities with less HOA fees. Uh, in December of nineteen ninety-five, HOPA Housing for Older Persons Act was signed into law. Under HOPA, it allows a community restricted units to be occupied or owned, uh, with at least one member being fifty-five or older. Eighty percent of the community or homes units must meet the above. Annual surveys must be taken to hear the above guidelines. These restrict, these requirements must be deeded to the property as part of the covenants conditions or part of the covenants condition restrictions to the property. Demographics, we pulled some recent demographics in August. Senior housing is needed in this area. If you look at the table, this is a three mile radius around this project. It is projected twenty twenty, there will be five thousand six hundred and one fifty-five or older, and is projected to keep increasing through twenty twenty-five to seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one. That's twenty-six point five percent. If you look at the lower chart from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty twenty, it has increased fifty point nine eight percent to fifty-five older population. And you'll see, I have a, a kind of a key phrase I want you to keep in mind. Not all density is the same, and I'll get into the reason why I'm saying that. Project details, total acreage forty-five point zero one acres. This is proposed as an age restricted detached homes, ninety percent. We're actually deed restricted ninety percent of the homes versus the minimum set by HOPA is eighty. There was some concern about the twenty percent, so we bumped it up to ninety percent. Uh, the number of lots, as Lee said, we were at a hundred and fifteen. We reduced it to eighty-nine. Again, from the planning board, there was some concern about density. Uh, so that's twenty-six less lots. Our gross density, that's rooftops, is one point nine seven lots per acre. We have a total open space of fourteen point nine, thirty-three point two percent of the site. Existing zoning R forty by right would be forty-nine lots if you use the forty thousand square foot lot size. And as Lee said, proposed zoning R four with conditions. Uh, we did increase the north buffer to forty feet, and I'll show you where that is located. Again, not all density is the same. Here's proposed rendering, uh, and you can see the amount of green area you have. The northern bu- bu- buffer is, is this portion right here. Uh, I think it's the Glen at Wesley Oaks is here. And we increased that buffer to forty feet. We are also, there is also an existing power line that comes, if you can see my error, comes here and then comes through the site. As we did develop the site, we will take that overhead line underground through the community and come back, and then it goes across Waxaw Indian Trail. Again, as you can see, we reduced it by twenty-six lots. Uh, this is a sketch plan that was submitted. Uh, you'll see the BMPs, the stream crossing here, which will be permitted. Uh, this will most likely be a sand filter. This would be a wet pond. Uh, then we have amenity center here with a pickleball court and also a pool. The mini center will have a workout center, uh, meeting areas and a kitchen. And if, if any of you have any questions during this process, I'll be happy to answer. Again, not all density is the same. If you take a traffic comparison of our age restricted plan versus a by right plan, a by right plan is the existing zoning, somebody comes in, we're going to build, they get approval because it's by right. So if you take a traditional single family homes with the current zoning of R forty versus the Epcun project, Epcun's project would generate thirty-two fewer trips per day. And in the chart below, based on the ITE, and that's the Institute of Transportation Engineers, this is, these guys have studied traffic all over the country. And these are very solid calculations of how they generate. So forty-nine lots would generate five hundred and forty trips per day. Senior adult housing would generate five hundred and eight. During the community meeting, planning board meeting, uh, there was concern about traffic. And, and, and as part of, of trying to be a, uh, I guess, for lack of a better term, I'm coming, but be a part of the solution versus not doing anything, uh, we have talked to NC DOT about improving the intersection of Waxaw Indian Trail and Billy Howie Road by adding a right-hand turn lane. Cause I've seen many times someone turning left that's on Billy Howie onto Waxaw Indian Trail that backs up, and it backs up all the way down to Wesley Oaks. Uh, so we feel this would be a good improvement to prevent any, um, backups on Billy Howie and any potential, uh, cut through, through Wesley Oaks, even though through Wesley Oaks is not a easy cut through to target. But again, this is us trying to be, uh, be a member of the solution, you know, trying to do something to help the situation. Again, these improvements are not required by NC DOT. Our traffic counts don't warrant a TIA or any improvements other than the left-hand turn lane into our project, uh, at the intersection with Wesley Oaks. Uh, again, density sometimes is really impact. And what is impact? If you look at a typical single fam- typical single family household has three point eight six people based on the current dr- graph, current demographics per home versus our one point seven people for an age restricted household. So if you, for example, by right plan with a forty thousand square foot lot, that'd be forty-five acres yields forty-nine lots. So if you take forty-nine units times three point eight six, that's a hundred and eighty-nine point one people within the community. That's impact. If you look at the age restricted plan at one point nine seven units per acre, forty-nine lots, I mean, eighty-nine lots, eighty-nine units at one point seven per home, that's a hundred and fifty-one point three people within the community. So that's the impact. That's the difference. So if a developer owner proceeded with current zoning or a by right plan on the property, Epcun's proposed community would still have thirty-eight less people in the community than current zoning. Again, not all density is the same. Uh, this is current demographics. This is where we pulled the number of, or average family size. If you look there in the highlighting, in the one mile radius, it was three point eight six average family size. And a three mile, it's three point five. Again, even if you use three point five, I believe that's a hundred and seventy-one people. That's still, we're still less than the by right. Uh, this is a cross section of Wesley Oaks, uh, or cross section where Wesley Oaks is to the north or would be the right side of that sheet. Yeah, the required, let's say, buffer or tree mitigation is fifteen feet. We increased it to twenty-five. So that'd be twenty-five undisturbed, uh, along the property line, the northern, and then we're doing additional fifteen feet of planted. So you have a total of forty feet of buffer between our project and the northern Wesley Oaks subdivision. Uh, this is showing you some, uh, just our product, showing the different elevations between the, the composite siding, hardy plank, painted, and then stone veneer and brick accents. Uh, this is an aerial view of a completed project. What's unique about our project, our product, is that we have a passive rear yard. If you'll notice, there is a, where's the mouse? This is a six-foot privacy fence, and then there is a four-foot aluminum fence here. This is the, the homeowner's private area to plant. It's their outdoor retreat. And everything outside of the homes is main, maintained by the HOA, grass cutting, everything. So in the rear yard, you will not have any playsets, uh, you know, any of that type of stuff, obviously for age restricted, but anything outside of that can't be built. So it has to, again, that's why it's passive rear yard. Uh, this just shows a sample of a mini center and pocket park. This is at our completed project, uh, courtyards at Emerald Lake. Uh, and you see the amenities center here, pool, and then a pocket park. Benefits, our community, communities benefit the local area. They provide a good tax revenue for town county schools with a high real estate tax base with low cost per household. We are averaging in our courtyards at Wesley Chapel, uh, and in the Charlotte area, our average price is four hundred and fifty thousand per home, and that's over two hundred dollars square foot. Our homes start in, with square footage around fifteen hundred and can go up to about thirty-two hundred with bonus rooms, depending on the product. Uh, we use high quality architectural features. We have fifty-five plus designed floor plans with painted fifty-year siding, uh, culture stone, brick accents, a variety of elevations, and also do the thirty-year architectural shingles. Uh, our buyers support local businesses, restaurants, services where they live. Uh, they also typically donate, donate more time and money towards charities and community causes. Again, not all density is the same. So even though we may have more rooftops than a by right, our impact is less than a by right plan. So I'm happy to answer anybody's question or, uh, concerns.
Mr. Hill.
Yes, I, uh, can you go back to the slide that has the picture of the houses as it's put out?
Uh, are you talking that, oop, that one?
It's a, it's a drawing.
This one?
No, sir. It shows the layout of the property with a net, a dividend, that's right.
Okay.
Uh, what are your lot sizes?
The lot size from a, a typical is sixty feet by one thirty-five, and that's about eight thousand square feet. But some of these are larger than that. That's, I guess you could say the smallest one is sixty by one thirty-five.
So your offset is five foot from the property line?
It's a li- it's, our product is forty-two feet wide. So if you have a sixty-foot house, I mean lot, sorry, forty-two feet, that'd be eighteen feet between the houses. So I believe we're, it's, the side setback is, I'm trying to remember, uh, five, but we're, we're not even close to that. So we're nineteen or eighteen feet between homes, if it, if they're all sixty feet wide lots.
The other part is, uh, keep referring to the senior component. So is, is this going to be, the actual, will not be children in there?
Well, I can't say absolutely not, because in a national average, there is about three percent that may have school age children. That's usually because of an event. Historically in Charlotte, it's less than one percent. Our average buyer is sixty-seven. But the deed restriction is ninety percent of the owners have to have at least one person fifty-five year old.
Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, I've been in one of the Epcun neighborhoods, uh, very beautiful homes, very nice, the way it's laid out. I do, I do have a couple of issues though with this one. Uh, the first being Ranely Drive. Um, you're emptying out right across from Ranely Drive, and it's already a cut through, uh, basically. You know, I've been in that neighborhood as well, and there's a lot of cut through traffic that comes from the restaurants and the commercial that's in the town of Wesley Chapel, and they come through that area to avoid the intersections and the other areas.
Right.
Was there any attempt to try to, to maybe take that, that out, the other road or to, to fix that issue of the residents just traveling straight across and through that other subdivision to get to the commercial?
Well, we feel like by adding the right turn lane at Billy Howie and Waxaw Indian Trail Road, that'll make that commute easier that direction versus going through the community because I think you have to make several turns within Wesley Oaks just to get to, uh, Target, the backside of, of. So we feel like, uh, by doing that, it'll help that flow on Billy Howie to get out, to move. Uh, and I think, uh, if I remember correctly, I can't remember, the, we looked at Waxaw Indian Trail. If you can see, we just didn't have road frontage in order to, to do right there.
Was there an attempt made to purchase road frontage or any kind of, uh, discussions about that?
We did. Uh, to the north is common open space of the Glen at Wesley Oaks. So this is their common open space, and I don't think they, from a tree mitigation within Wesley Chapel, they can sell that. The south property, we did not or couldn't, we didn't have a contact there.
Okay. Um, the other issue is that it's completely surrounded by the Village of Wesley Chapel.
Yeah.
And, you know, in this, if we're going to change, you know, we, we already, you know, we hear already from them, that we don't think we had a resolution. Was there a resolution for that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, you know, there is a concern there of just changing something that is completely surrounded, not one single property completely surrounded.
I, I understand completely. We actually, just south of this properly, property, we, uh, had a parcel under contract and met with the planning at Village Wesley Chapel. They've removed that age restricted portion of their ordinance, which is fine. That's, they're entitled to. So we can't, our product won't fit. So that's why we're here before you. Cause we just can't meet their ordinance the way it's written for our product.
Can, can I ask that question? I- is that correct? That you, they don't have that, you don't have that zoning available?
Correct.
You have no age restriction zoning available?
No.
And what's unique about ours is obviously we have a smaller lot because as the HOA maintains the ground, we can't have half acre acre lots. It's just the, the, the economics of it doesn't work. So that's partly, and our buyers don't want to maintain yards. That's why they're moving.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
This time we will open the public hearing. And our first speaker is, uh, Bonnie Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, I stand here before you representing four hundred and forty-three registered Union County voters, and I brought this along for you, um, who are opposed to this development. He stated that there are several turns to be made to get to the shopping center. It's actually three. You come into our, come straight into our development, turn left, go a long straight road up, turn right, and then turn left, and you're in the shopping center. We have a tremendous amount of pass-through traffic already. I, I just don't know how we could tolerate any more of that. Um, additionally, the water, I, I bring this up because we suffer with very poor water pressure. I can't imagine having more people tapping into the line, which happens to be on our common space, by the way, is going to help our water pressure at all. Also, he talks about a right-hand turn lane. I don't know how he's going to get that without taking our common space in order to do that, since our common space comes right up against Billy Howie Road. Again, we would be asked to sacrifice something for something we don't want in the first place. Um, I'm also, it's wonderful that they've reduced it by twenty-six lots. I do appreciate that, and I understand that's a financial commitment for them. But also, there are undeveloped lots around there. There are two roads that are designated as pu- uh, future connections to future development. If that is approved at R four- If that is approved at R4, what is to keep any of those other lots from being approved also? And again, we will be bearing the burden of that. If they do exit up above the Glen, the people in the Glen are never gonna be able to get out of there. The traffic is already bad for them trying to get out of their community. I can't imagine being in the Glen and trying to turn left. I just, I, you know, I understand this will be developed. I would also like to say that in my particular family, we have four kids. They are all in their fifties, they all have school-aged children, and all but the thirteen-year-old drive. So just the fact that it's age-restricted, I, you know, I don't see where that would keep there from being older children, at least in the neighborhood for some time. And we all know that a lot of college students go back home for a period of time. But, um, would you be interested in this? All right, I did a quick internet search just before we got here. That alone yielded sixteen hundred age-restricted homes, or fifty-five-plus homes, that have been approved or have already been built within Union County. And I know that there are more than them, I just can't, couldn't remember the development names to find them. So I realize there's a market for it, but within twenty-five miles of where I live, there are hundreds and hundreds of those homes, not necessarily within Union County, but very close by. I don't know that there is that huge a need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm David Kephammer, I'm at five zero seven Conway Court in Waxall. I live in the Glen, which is that area just north there of the neighborhood. So we're the only community that has homeowners that abut this neighborhood. So I wanted to, I'm here to let you know that I stand against the project for the various sundry reasons that you've been hearing about so far. It definitely doesn't fit within our community. We already have three fifty-five-plus neighborhoods in the community already. The traffic will, i- i- it is a burden. I don't suffer the Billy Howie traffic that the folks in the Glen suffer from. I get to drive past it, and I see them all in line waiting to turn right onto Waxall Indian Trail. So that's definitely a nightmare for them. As far as the, some commentary around, around the residents that would be in these communities. So I've spent time this summer driving through the different neighborhoods. And what you find in the fifty-five-plus neighborhoods are New York, Kentucky, Florida, South Carolina, Pennsylvania, and Virginia. These are the, these are where these folks live. And these are the license plates on the cars that sit in their driveways. So they're definitely transient folks, and I don't know if their homes just stay empty all the time or if they rent them out while they're not there, while they're living wherever it else, wherever it else it is they live. But if you decide that it's in the best interest of Wesley Chapel and Union County to approve the project, I, I, I'd sent a letter, I don't know if you saw it or not, I sent it in, in the beginning of September, requesting two conditions, and it sounds like the builder has already acquiesced with the power line. So it, the power line would basically be in my backyard if it was, if it was not put underground. And the other, the other question I had was, I, I didn't know there was a new plan. So that's great to see that there are fewer homes. But what I don't understand is, now that there are twenty-six fewer homes, why didn't you take the twenty-six that abut the only neighborhood that you go against? Why didn't the twenty-six come from that area and, and fill in the rest of the spot where you had the hundred and fifteen before? So that's very confusing to me. The only neighborhood that you abut, you still keep all of those homes there. And you, and you remove them down from the bottom where you back up to Fields. Because that area, that spot in the bottom, there used to be all homes through there, and all of that was removed. So the only other condition that I'm, I'm requesting, if you decide it's, it's worthwhile approving, the buffer between our neighborhoods, between the back of, you know, my neighborhood and the back of this proposed neighborhood, is twenty-five feet. It's been proposed that it would stay twenty-five feet. And I, I know Mr. Davis had mentioned it's forty, that doesn't look any different in the plans that I saw from, from the past. I, I'd ask that that stay undisturbed, because it's already woods, it's thick, it's finished. And there's actually another twenty-five feet on the back of the homes that are there on the north end that could also stay undisturbed. So that could be fifty feet of undisturbed buffer that would be good for the people that live there and good for the folks in my neighborhood. And I think that's it. Thank you all very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Mike Kuma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. To Stoney's point, I wanted to point out one historic thing that you may or may not know. The village of Wesley Chapel does have three senior housing communities in it, but not by choice. The way that happened was developers were frantic to develop senior housing in Wesley Chapel, to the point where they went to Senator Tucker and said, "DNX us out of Wesley Chapel." So we had an option of either losing the property, losing control of the property, or allowing senior housing. We were told, "Allow these two senior housing projects to go through, and then you can immediately take it off the books. That way, these two developers will stop calling me," is what Senator Tucker said. Our hands were tied. We were basically told, "Do this or else," so we did it. And then as we were getting ready to pull the age-restricted ordinances off the books, one more application slipped in the day before. So we had to let that one through as well. The planning board has already spoken on this. They, this is inconsistent with the area, the residents to the north, to the west, to the east. Everyone has not been in favor of this. We have a resolution that should have come across your all's desk, restating that as well. I don't know what else I can say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's our last speaker, so I will close the public hearing. Takes us to item number seven, seven, opportunity for hearing by claimant, the Schoeff Law Firm. Is anyone here with Schoeff Law Firm that cares to speak? No, I will close that comment period. Item number eight is similar opportunity for hearing by claimant regarding request. And that is the Sperry Law Firm. Any one here from the Sperry Law Firm wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close that comment period. All right, that takes us to, I was notified by the clerk that we had a, an employee recognition that slipped by, so I want to take the opportunity to, to do that at this time. We have a birthday, birthday boy among us. I, I got him a birthday hat. I would've got him a cake, but he can't blow out the candles because he would possibly contaminate. If anybody's ever heard me sing, I would be considered, considered a super-spreader. So I'm gonna put my mask on, and I, and y'all can join me in spirit or in voice to wish Commissioner Rushing a happy birthday. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Rushing, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
That's on your life, that's on your life record now.
How old are you, Stoney?
I have forty-nine years old.
Again.
Yes. Just, uh, thank you very much, guys, we appreciate it.
Our next item is informal comments, and we have one to speak.
The informal comments is, is related to the meeting we had last month, or that you had last month, out at the Ag Center. And that was interesting, to say the least. My only takeaway from that meeting was sitting and having lunch with Stoney Rushing and speaking with Richard Helms and talking with a couple of you one-on-one, is the fact that the county commissioners don't seem to think they can trust the staff at the county level. That bothers me as a resident of Union County, not as a councilman for Wesley Chapel or anything else. But if you, as a county commissioner, can sit there and say you don't trust your staff, you guys have much bigger problems. I understand tonight, we're gonna be dealing with what goes on this corner and what goes on this property and everything else. But if you can't sit there and say, "I have control what happens in this county," oh, wait a minute, I don't have control what's going on in this county. It's the subcontractors that the Public Works Department hires. They're, they have control of what goes on in this county. That bothers me. And as a famous politician said once in the past, "The house divided, you know the rest." I would hope that when you spend time deliberating things like what goes on this corner and what goes on this property, you would also allocate some time here in the near, very near future to restore whatever problems you seem to be having with staff, to the point where you can sit down and say, "I trust when this person or when this person says something, that that is a true statement." And if you don't, it's a house divided. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Takes us to additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to add an item to the agenda for new business regarding extension of the county manager's employment contract.
We'll make that item thirty-three A. We have a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item is consent. We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Takes us to old business, which, I believe we don't have any.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have Public Works Director Honey with us.
I'm sorry, we do have something.
Yes.
Excuse me.
On the, uh, to do a, give a, give an update and report to the, to the board regarding the FY twenty and FY twenty-one short waterline extension program.
Thank you.
Got a slide presentation for you.
I am, there it is. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm happy to be here to give you an update on what's going on with the short waterline extension program. I just got a couple of slides to give you an update, and, you know, I'm happy to take questions afterwards. So really, I, I'm gonna cover it in three parts. The first is the twenty program right now, what we plan to do in fiscal year twenty-one, and then sort of what happens after that, what happens after fiscal year twenty-one. And so to give you a big-picture view of what we're doing right now for a short waterline program in FY twenty, it's in four phases. It's about eight-point-seven miles worth of, of water lines that we're laying, forty-six thousand linear feet. We hear forty-six thousand feet, it's a lot of feet. It's easier for me to just sort of translate it into miles. We're laying almost nine miles of pipe in the short waterline program in fiscal year twenty. This is in response to a hundred and thirteen applicants that we will be serving that have already applied into the program. We're doing it at a cost of, of about five million dollars. The engineer on this project is W.K. Dixon, they are working on all four areas. The first phase I want to talk to you about is Pinewood Forest. It's two roads, Pinewood Forest Drive, Plainview Road. It was about two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars worth of construction costs and four thousand linear feet, almost a mile, of two six- and eight-inch water lines. Now, fourteen applicants originally applied. There were already eleven existing customers, but they were, we were running long water lines down the Wesley Chapel Road. So this project actually cleaned all that up, so the, the water lines are coming directly in front of their home. Since we installed these water lines, one additional customer has connected to the, to the system in this area. So fourteen, eleven, and one, that is a total of twenty-six total service connections out of a possible thirty-nine in, along these two roads. This line is operational, it went operational, it passed the final test in September, and so the folks in this area are getting water. And so if anybody in those other thirteen lots are listening, if you want county water, we can connect you. All you have to do is call. The Phase Two for us is in six different locations in the northern part of the county. You can see the list of the areas there, I don't need to go over it again. It's about a million and a half worth of construction cost, in the opinion of the engineers. It's almost three miles worth of pipeline, two-point-seven miles of two, six, and eight, and twelve-inch water lines. We have twenty-five applicants that have applied into the program and been accepted. When we count the lots, there are an additional one hundred and, well, twenty-five applicants out of a total universe of a hundred and fourteen lots. So there's still opportunity for us to connect some customers once those lines go in. And we are, we of course do the reach-out when those lines become operational. In terms of status, where we are right now is in the permitting and the collection of easements so that we can do the work. In some cases, we have to cross the property of folks that are not a part of the program or didn't apply into the program, and so we're having to collect those easements. We will go out for bid in the next couple of weeks for a construction firm. We plan to have all that bidding process done and start construction in January twenty-twenty-one and complete it, complete all six segments by September twenty-twenty-one. It's worth noting that if we should, say, finish G.B. Hill Road sooner, that'll become operational soon. We're not waiting until September to, to become operational in all six roads. So if a project is done or a road segment is done in March, we'll go operational in March. So we're not waiting till September to go operational. We just think that's how much time it'll take to get through all six areas. Phase Three for us is in the, I guess, the southern half of the county. Excuse me, four, four roads. Again, it's about a million and a half, almost fifteen thousand feet of pipe, two-point-eight miles of two, six, and eight inch. Thirty-two applicants out of sixty-eight lots. So again, a little bit of opportunity for us to connect more customers once these lines go active. As we go, as I get to Phase Four, they're gonna be a little bit further behind in terms of how they're staggered. So here, we are about ninety-five percent done with the design. We're still in the, again, the easement collection process and going through the permitting. And we'll advertise for bids in November. This is about thirty days behind Phase Two. We'll start construction in February, and we hope to be done by October twenty-twenty-one. And again, as segments get done, they will, we'll activate the lines and they'll go online sooner. And last but not least, in twenty-twenty, in twenty-twenty, Phase Four is on the western side of the county, seven locations. One-point-two-six million dollars is the construction cost opinion, about twelve-and-a-half thousand feet of pipe, two, six, and eight inch, thirty-one applicants, a hundred-four total lots. So again, more opportunity to collect customers as, as we go active with the lines. This is a little bit behind again. It's about ninety percent done with the design of the lines. Permitting and easements are still being collected. We hope to have that done by November, go out to bid in December, start construction in March, done by November of next year. So again, you know, each phase is about thirty days behind the last. So that's short waterline twenty-twenty. In twenty-twenty-one, initially, there were twenty-four project locations, fifty-four thousand feet, linear feet, a little bit over ten miles of pipe, and sixty applicants. We have a budget of five million dollars, and we've, we're planning to start this project in twenty-twenty, so not too far from now. And you can see the project locations are all over the, the map, you know, the north part, south part, the west. So as we contacted all of these locations and all these applicants, I can tell you what the current, you know, that was the initial pool of people that we had prioritized. And what's happened since is that five different applicants have dropped off for a variety of reasons. One of them needed water, they just put down a well. Another one needed a connection, because they were thinking about buying a home, but then they decided not to buy the home, so they've dropped out of the program as well. And the other three, I think, when they got to the cost share, just decided it's, it's too, it's too far, it's too much money, I can't afford it, we're, I'm dropping out of the program. So we are left with nineteen project locations, about forty-one thousand linear feet, almost eight miles of pipe, fifty-four applicants out of a hundred and eighty total lots. The construction estimate is slightly lower, because there's less... The construction estimate is slightly lower because there's less feet, so it's about $4 million worth of construction cost. Right now, our thinking is to do it in three phases, about equal size, so we're just figuring out how to divvy up the locations so that each phase has about the same number of feet and cost to them. We hope to start in November 2020 with the same engineering firm that started, that did the 2020 program, W.K. Dixon. Given their experience and expertise on the program, we think this will help us save some time and probably some money as well, to keep the same engineer to work on the 2021 program. And so they'll do the survey and design work for us, and then we'll move on to the bidding, the permitting, the easements, and then the bidding of the program. So once we get through those two phases, if you remember the discussions that led us to this point, it was really to work through the backlog, and 2020 and 2021 does that for us. And then when we get to 2021, beyond 2021 and beyond, it really is a different program. So when we get to January 2020, we'll have an updated program with a six-month application process open to everyone, competitive rank. There's no annual budget allocation. So depending on the rank of where the... How many people apply, what we think the estimate is to lay all that down in terms of pipe, we'll come before you with a recommendation. It's really up to the board to make an annual allocation to how far down that list you want to go to. And, you know, once you make that allocation, we're done, and then the next year, we start all over again, so there is no running backlog. There's also a cost share based on frontage, you know, how many linear feet you have in front of your house as it relates to the waterline, and there is an assessment process to help manage the cost for applicants so that they're not paying a pretty big hefty upfront payment all at once, but they can do it over time. So in short, that's pretty much it. That is the status of the program right now. 2020 is, you know, underway. We've activated one project. We're working towards construction in the other phases. 2021 is about ready to go, and then we're preparing for the future as we go through the program. So that's sort of where we are. If there are any questions, I am happy to take them.
Mr. Ray.
Hang on, I just want to congratulate you. You know, we have come so far in a couple of years as far as fulfilling promises and trying to meet the needs of the people, and I realize it's got to make financial sense, but at least we're headed the right direction, and you seem to be able to keep all of your engineers focused when we try to unfocus them.
Well, thank you.
But thank you for all you do and all your staff does.
Well, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hale.
Hang on, I can tell you, Pinewood Forest was a neighborhood that had contaminated wells, that had homes built there that had no water. I've heard from a number of those residents, just ecstatic about the delivery you have made to get them water. And I think it demonstrates this board initially took this list and ranked it by the urgency, the health and safety of our citizens, and that's proved to be very beneficial. We appreciate all that you've done, and I know these citizens are ecstatic to participate in the water system.
Well, thank you again, sir. The only... I'll make a commitment to you is that in that, I expect this is probably not the last short-line program update that the manager's going to ask me to do for the board, so I assume we'll be back regularly, so I'm happy to give regular updates as projects progress.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Takes us to new business, Project Town Center to consider an economic development incentive grant.
Motion to approve the economic development incentive grant awarded to Town Center of the City in the amount of $500,000. Paying for the installation of the municipal project this for year 2021, and authorize the county manager to approve this incentive grant agreement to Town Center.
Okay, we have a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Takes us to item 32, Hamilton Drywall Products, a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant.
I'd make a motion to approve the Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant awarded to Hamilton Drywall Products, Project Eastback, in an amount up to the seat of $115,000, paid over a five-year period, beginning in FY 2026, and authorize the county manager to approve an incentive grant agreement from Hamilton Drywall Products pending later review.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Takes us to item 33, disposal of real property.
Mr. Chairman, the county owns a couple of different tracts of land off of Lancaster Avenue. Both of them are 11.71 acres apiece. This is located across the street from Cata. The county has owned this property for some time. We do incur costs on an annual basis to keep it up. Every once in a while, we get phone calls from adjoining neighbors to come cut trees down that are leaning over the property line and so forth, and we have to go out there and maintain it. Staff is recommending that the county sell these assets, and we are looking for the board to adopt a resolution to allow us to dispose of the assets via sealed bid in accordance with GS 168-268.
Motion to adopt the resolution for disposition of certain real property by sealed bid in accordance with GS 168-268.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Takes us to county manager's comments.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I missed you, Dennis.
35A, 33A, sorry.
We had discussion, and we're very happy with the direction the county's headed in, and I would like to make a motion, move to amend the county manager's employment contract by extending the end of the contract term from December 31, 2021, to December 31, 2024, and authorize the county attorney to draft, and the chairman and manager to execute the contract amendment.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, say aye. Aye. Now, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of items for the board. You all are aware of the small business CARES grants that we've been working on over the last couple of weeks. There's been a... I think to say there's been a fair amount of interest would be an understatement. There's been a lot of interest in that program. We are utilizing the services of Central Island Council to help us review and analyze each of those applications, and we have a number of them that are in the queue for approval. Just wanted to let you know that you'll be receiving an update and an email probably later on this week from Deputy County Manager Michelle Lancaster, and we will give you a full report on this grants program at your next meeting. Couple of important dates that I'd like to mention. One has already occurred. Thursday, October 1, we broke ground on the Norwood Intake and Pump Station up at Lake Tillery, part of the Yadkin Water Project. It was a Chamber of Commerce Day. The lake was deep blue and the sky was Carolina blue, and you couldn't ask for a better temperature. We hope that we repeat that this Wednesday, October 7, when we break ground for the public water treatment facility located at 3522 New Salem Road at 2:00 p.m. And I know that you all have received your invitations, and some of you have part in the program, but if there's any member of the public that would like to attend that groundbreaking, that we certainly welcome them to do so. That's Wednesday, October 7, 2:00 p.m. at 3522 New Salem Road. And also, long anticipated, long awaiting, awaited groundbreaking for the Union County Sheriff's Office Administration Building. That will be Tuesday, October 13, at 10:00 a.m. Received a number of communications and seen a lot of planning going on for that groundbreaking, but much-needed improvement to the admin facility out there at the sheriff's office, and I know the sheriff and his staff are looking forward to that. So that's next Tuesday, October... Well, Tuesday after next, actually, October 13 at 10:00 a.m. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Avis.
I have no comments.
Mr. Rushing.
Just thank you once again for the happy birthday wishes, and I know you and Commissioner Ray, about this time in 1971, have probably been graduating from high school. Commissioner Helms, you were maybe in the military then, or?
Seventy-one? I've been out.
You'd probably been applying for Social Security, but I appreciate the birthday wishes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Helms.
Yeah, I want to make a comment. There was a comment made in public comments today that I took to great offense. We have one of the most transparent staffs and the best working relationship staff that I've experienced. I think it was demonstrated by the extension of the manager's contract. I consider it a privilege to work with the staff we work with. We don't always agree, but we respectfully work out the differences, and that's what we're supposed to do as a board. So, sorry, I disagree greatly with you, but I am proud of our staff, and I look forward, hopefully, to working with them in the long-term future. Thank you.
Commissioner Ray.
No comments.
Commissioner Rushing loves to talk about how old I am, and I am getting a little long in the tooth. You know, one, a couple of things about that. One is your eyesight. You start to lose your eyesight, and the other thing is you start to see those little toddlers that used to run around under your feet. They're always getting in your way, and I... Is that lurking in the shadows, Officer Mills back there? Step forward, sir. There's one of those little toddlers that used to run around under my feet, and it's always great to see young men and women aspire and become leaders in our county. We thank our sheriff's office for the great job they do in providing security for our meetings. Good job. Anything else with that? I'll offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.